On the consent agenda, Doris?
Yes, sir. I, there are several very expensive items on this consent agenda and I was not comfortable but just passing a wand over them without taking a look at it. Here's some of my thoughts. Tree trimming, I'm assuming this is an open bid, but is it a specific job or is it something that will go on routinely all through the year? There's no explanation being given on that.
You want to take them one at a time?
Yeah, I think, let me go all the way through it then and give you my explanation of why I think we ought to do this. Here is bids 164, 65, or 1864, 65, and 66 having to do with furniture for the new schools. We're going to get a report on the new schools. Why not include that as a part of the report to the school? Because this gives us clarification of how some of these monies are being spent rather than just routinely passing across the top of it. We've approved these things on buses before. I don't know how others feel about it. I wonder about it sometimes. There are...
What are you wondering about?
Sir?
What are you wondering about?
The money.
Where the money comes from? We're charging fees to take driver ed, but yet this is where the money comes from, is those fees.
We get, we get federal, federal money for driver ed too, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm...
So that's not really, typically the fee money goes towards insurance and fuel. Thank you.
But a good explanation might be in order every once in a while to just keep us fresh because I, for one, I can't remember everything we do. I am such a supporter of special ed, but I'm looking at special ed, some things that we're just going, I don't think we ought to routinely just pass over. I'm not sure how many dollars are involved. One of them, I can't identify if it's special ed or someplace else. But there are about four bids there that probably deserve a little more time than just a cursory look at them. Promethean boards, Title II kind of funds, but are they available in all the schools? And where, that kind of thing. Blackman High School wants to add a building with no cost to the board. They don't give us any indication of where the money's coming from. We're responsible for what's done on the property. So it's, I think there's a need to know. We've never stood in the way, but there's still a need to know. Segal wants to build a, some type of press box. Does it tell us where the money's coming from? We think we know where the money's coming from. I love this thing. Elementary school trip to the zoo, very important. United Way, that kind of thing. Head start buildings. I guess head start, that's another issue that must be an agenda item, but that was a very long list of things on the routine bids and some of those I'm just not thinking are routine. More to it than just everyday kind of expenses. I don't know how others feel about that, but those were things that caught my attention. There's a $216,000 bid and I don't know, I think that's deserving of some explanation.
We, I mean, we can certainly go over them right now. I mean, we're prepared to do so. I don't, you know, past several years, you're right, we put them on a consent agenda and provided the information, I thought, with respect to each issue so that you could kind of weigh whether you wanted to proceed or not, but you know, we got the staff here, we've all pretty much played a part in what's on that consent agenda, so anything on there, I'd be happy to address. I know like, for example, lockers, the things that related to Oakland and McKinnon, those are things that we obviously got to be, you know, we put out for bid, they're low bid, we got to be getting them in to...
It'd be neat to have that, it might be neat to have that as a part of his report and also approval at that time.
Mr. Gill, you might be able to settle a little bit of it. If you talked about the special education and differentiated instruction for those, what is it, five days or how does that, you've had some days that we've had and we get, teachers get 12 hours. You might explain some of that.
We get in-service hours. Obviously, we get federal money that's dedicated to professional growth. It's become such a big part of our, of our overall program and for the past several years, we've done those DI conferences and our thought is it's a whole lot cheaper to bring them in and train 1,000 to 1,100 than it is to bring them into individual schools and pay. You've seen what we pay individual schools, so I think we've gotten a lot of mileage out of that. I think that's really contributed to our test scores going up, among other things.
And I agree. Training is, whatever our age is, is critical.
Sure.
Because we don't, we can still learn.
But some of that money in that special education budget has to go for that training or some type of training, doesn't it?
Yes.
So that's what you've, what we've, what the staff has chosen to use it for.
Yeah, we brought in principals, we've sat down and talked about various training, how we expend that money. You know, there's a great deal of input into how that money's spent and, you know, aside from that, we've got title money that's, that schools that qualify for get money. They, the principal submits, plan, actually Amy and we, Mr. Odom looks at it and if it ties itself to improve instruction, we generally pass it. But again, the furniture, it's really kind of part of that initial startup program. You know, we got to obviously have library shelving, we have to have lockers, we have to have furniture and we almost always go out the bid. If we get a really, really, really low bid and we got a school opening the next year, sometime we use that bid again. But in the case of these three things, we went out for bid and we got a great bid this time. You addressed the whole deal about the driver ed money, each school. Jeff's wanting to say something, Jeff?
Well, on those three furnishing bids, they are available for other purchases if we wind up buying replacement furniture or whatever. On the library furniture, this bid came in about 20,000 lower than our last bid and the locker bid is appreciably lower than our last bid. In the locker, we both have schools need to add some lockers or whatever, we'll use that bid for that and of course the next year soon.
But, but right now, we've designated it for two buildings, whereas if we, it's really a bid for more than just two buildings.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yeah. But I mean, for example, we could go, if we opened a school next year, which we're not, we could use that same bid or if we thought the market was out there for a lower bid, we'd go back out the bid.
I'm not...
Sure, I understand.
I'm not opposing any of this. I'm just saying, to me, and I'm just one of seven, some type of explanation might be a benefit to all of the board and to those who view our transactions. Those board members.
Well, if you, I mean, if it's okay to you, and I think you raised a good issue, well, I'll go down through here and one of us explain, just give you a quick summary of what we're doing.
That'd be great.
Okay.
If others...
Sound reasonable? With respect to the van, the van, each, each of the high school does get federal money and also there's a fee charge for driver ed. We've been fortunate, Nissan's helped us out with donating some cars, but oftentimes this driver ed, some of this driver ed money, to be honest with you, is used for purchasing a bus, buses that they will tell you might be used in relationship to driver ed sometimes and could be some other uses is found, but we've been doing it and... I recommend that we continue to do it. Statewide contract, 224 special ed department to purchase passenger van. You want to speak to that, Shirley, real quick?
Yes, sir. We want to use the air funds to purchase that vehicle for the special ed department to use. There are times when we do have to transport a child and parent to certain places and we are always running down and giving them use because we don't use personally. So we felt this was an opportune time to air to purchase that.
Hey, thank you. Then we have an applicant tracking system and personnel action we've looked at for years trying to upgrade technology and human resource. Ms. Barnes actually went to Georgia and saw what they had, which would have cost millions of dollars, so we condensed that to about $34,000 here. Ms. Barnes, give them a quick update on what we're doing there.
The current system that we have is at least 10 years old and it really, really we've about grown that system. We continue to have multiple errors every day with people trying to apply because we can't, we just can't accommodate the numbers of applicants coming into that particular program. It's something we house on our own server and what we're proposing is to go with Search Soft, who is a subscription web-based service. It's used by all the larger systems in Tennessee and we're modeling after Shelby in Memphis City, but Knox County Metro uses it, Williamson County, Hamilton County. So it is able to accommodate all of the applicant tracking mechanisms that we have in place. It sends out notification emails, it gives us at a quick glance whether a person is highly qualified based on Tennessee standards because it has all that written into the program so it can monitor what is scanned in by the employee. So it's really an outstanding program. This will be funded through Title II, which is part of their recruitment efforts. The funds can be used for that purpose. And the other components that we want to add to this is what we call a position control. And as you know, our federal programs often require specific reporting processes, especially Title I and Title II, so that we can track our applicants, their degrees, their years of experience, what schools they are placed at initially and how we can track those, those applicants and employees as they move through the system. We're also going to have a HR component that allows us to post and to do transfer processes all online. So we're trying to move away from paper. We've simply run out of room in HR. We just can't accommodate any more applications and this will allow us to go paperless. So we think that over a period of about three years, we'll be able to move from complete paper into a paperless system, starting with the brand-new applicants coming into our system.
Okay. Any questions? Now, I know Doris has got a question about the previous thing, but any questions to Ms. Barnes? Doris, you want to ask about the board?
Well, on the bus, it...
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
The, we have special ed buses, which make all these runs. Do they not do the, pretty much the same thing as what we're proposing?
With a, with a minivan?
Uh-huh.
No, sir. This is where, this would be, this would be where we would be taking a special ed child maybe for some type of evaluation or something and so we would use the minivan then to take the parent and the child to Nashville for that evaluation. We've used it for that before. Also, if we have training to where we have four or five people going to Nashville or to Jackson or somewhere, that we could use that to go on that all in one. Not do it to college with four or five.
Who's, who's going to be responsible for controlling its use?
I would be. It would be a sign-out sheet. We would do the same, signing out sheet of where it's going, the use of it, who, excuse me, who's going to drive that day. It would be a sign-out, check-out sheet with it.
So it is the school system's responsibility to transport a child for evaluation or some special test?
If the parent doesn't have that transportation or something. We always try to, but there are times when our social workers need...
Is that part of IEP?
Can be. We don't usually put that into the IEP that we're transporting them, no. But if they have to have a certain thing, then yes, it would be part of the special ed need.
Thank you.
But we always go with the parents and then try and take care of all that we can.
Thank you so much.
Did you look in cost effective, this renting of vans, the minivans instead of buying one?
We have never, we've always used one of the county vehicles. Renting would be probably going down to Hales or somewhere like that and trying to just rent for that day that we're needing that. I think we can use this, it's just a family size, a minivan is what we're working at. Also for training, when we have to load up things and go to a school for training, right now, most people are doing that out of their own vehicles and stuff. Or else we are having to sign up for one of the engineering vehicles to take the parent to do things and, and they are booked, they stay booked with it and they have to rearrange a whole, quite a bit of stuff in order for us to end up to use in the system. It is just that we have that stimulus money. It is something that they will allow us to purchase and we felt like it was just an opportune time to maybe try and do that, but it will definitely be used.
And also remember that we had, it was very limited with respect to how we could spend that money and also that money's going to dry up in two years' time. We felt like this was a needed purchase and we didn't want to commit ourselves to recurring cost, you know, like by hiring positions that we couldn't, that we'd have to cut next year. It wasn't fair to the people and that's kind of the reason we went here. Well, I'm like Ms. Bell, I think it's going to be a good move. Thanks, Shirley.
Another question.
Well, just a statement, this can be a recurring cost because that, eventually this vehicle will wear out. We will have grown accustomed to its use and...
Yeah, well, we wouldn't have to replace it, but I mean, I guess you can make that case.
But it's kind of like a third vehicle. You find a good use for it and you keep using it. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Bell? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gill.
There are three or four contracts here. One, hang on just a second. I think one, the contract with Karen Nelson, Orientation Mobility Special, any questions on that? Or any of these contracts? I know you mentioned particularly the Promethean Boards for Roy Waldron, Mr. Jernigan?
Let's not go from this with the Karens just yet. Is this, is she a full-time employee?
Ms. Bell, speak, address that.
Now, we are, we would be contracting with this person for only orientation and mobility for vision students. You have to have a certain certification in order to teach that and right now I have two students that need that training that's into their IEPs and so we have to supply a person to do that training. She's also a person that, we have a seizure dog now in the system and so she's able to come in and do the training as far as with the staff and the students on that training for a seizure dog.
So she's a contract?
She's contracted. We only would need her by the certain amount of hours of what's written into an IEP.
That next one, Ziggur-?
The Ziggurat, Ziggurat, okay. That is an autism program that we want to bring some training in here for four days. We would do two trainings in one month and the other two trainings later on in April or May. It is an approach that centers on five levels of system structured in a hierarchy. Each level represents an area that must be addressed in order for an intervention plan to be comprehensive. If needs and characteristics are related to autism spectrum that we would need to address and it would help facilitate our autism students.
Are there more of them in our system today than, say, eight years ago?
Oh, yes. Our numbers are growing and we have phone calls, so we had one today from out of state that is moving in here. And so we are constantly growing and we have a chart on where we're graphing our growth with students with autism and I think we are up to about 230, 240 right now.
Those things are impressive because we take it for granted and it happens, but it doesn't just happen, it happens because somebody makes it happen. And Ms. Bell, that's your department.
It's our fastest-growing certification for special education right now and that's across the United States and around the world.
Thanks, Ms. Bell. You got a question?
Just real quick, of course, the number of students in our system have grown exponentially over the last several years, so the percentage of these children with special needs, that percentage has grown larger than, than the growth of our students, student number. So if we had 3% that had special needs, is it now 7%?
You can figure about anywhere from 12 to 14% of your total populations of students in a system will be special needs students.
But does that...
That's stabilized. I mean, it hadn't really increased over time, actually with the...
No, it's about, yeah, we've been below the state percentage.
So, but even though our number of students have grown, the percentage has basically stayed about the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Bell?
Just, just a financial question. $25,000 for this, that's for both sessions?
Yes, sir.
That's the total package?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Another question?
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Then we have one, the, next one, there's one on block scheduling. As you're aware, we're going to, from a six to seven period day next year, a 7A B schedule. There'll be some block teaching. One of the things that the principals and the teachers were most concerned about was how, you know, how would they best utilize time in a 90-minute schedule? Rick Warmerly is one of the experts on that, so we're bringing him in to train on that so that they can in fact be effective in there. Let's see, and there's copy of the contract there. Also, we kind of discussed the DI conference, the impact of DI. This year, we're going to do, do it somewhat different, it'll be a two-day, I think we're breaking it down into half-days, be about 1,100 teachers. We identify the areas that we'll train. There'll be an emphasis on increasing value-added scores since that's kind of the, you know, the benchmark for a teacher's success now, as defined by some, not necessarily us, although it's important. And so as I said earlier, we've gotten a lot of, lot of bang for our bucks, we think, with that DI conference and we intend to do that again. Cedar Grove does something with the Nashville Zoo. You know, yes, sir.
Say, am I looking at this figure correctly for that of 216,406 dollars?
I think that's probably close to right. Hang on. Yes.
Two days?
Yeah, but they, is it a two, is it a full two days? We're bringing, how many people they sending in?
It's in that, the list of presenters in the breakdown.
1,100, 1,100 is what it says here, PK 12.
But you've got your presenters as separate. The list of presenters is one of your contracts there.
26 presenters. Sounds like a lot of money, but if you sent 1,000 teachers out on airplane to go somewhere to hear this somewhere else, I think it could be a lot more when you could do them all together here.
It is a lot of money and the thing about it is with this, with the governor's program, this race to the top, is the DI going to still be a part of that program?
I mean, I think teachers are still going to have to teach. I mean, they're going to, yeah, I mean, in retrospect, part of our proposal in connection with race to the top is going to be how we're going to address value-added scores. Governor and the legislature just said 35% of teacher evaluation is going to be based on their value-added scores. He'd have preferred it to be even higher than that. So we are really addressing value added through this two days of training. Now, that's one of the main focuses of this two-day DI conference, but I mean, I still would hang up my hat or our hat on the fact that we'll be training over a two-day period 2,200 people. You know, if you do the dividing and I think, I mean, they're coming from all over the country. I mean, they're, do we, I don't think we pay their room and board, it comes out of that 200 and travel.
It's, yeah, the company we deal with, with SDE, we, we sometimes specify who we want to hear because we've heard them somewhere else before. If not, you got to do 26 individual contracts and do your own.
And a lot of these people do charge. I don't know how they get it, they could get $1,000, $1,200 a day to go somewhere.
The Title II monies must be spent for teacher training or, and we're doing some with tracking personnel, like you're going to have to track experience of teachers, level of teachers' experience in each of your schools to see if that's appropriate. Now, there's many things that they're, they're tying the tracking to, but we used to have Title II and Title V. V was serving students. They zeroed out V and we still get a considerable sum of money for Title II, but it has to be spent on teacher preparation and training. So if we have two days teachers have to earn, you just can't, with 2,700 teachers, you can't do that in 25 people groups. When you think about, when you, you know, if you do it two hours in the afternoon, that teacher's got to have 12 hours, it just, there's not enough staff here to even touch it. So you have to do it in a mass way to try to reach that, that many people.
I mean, technically, we could say, okay, every school's going to get X number of dollars, but they're still not going to, but it's got to be used for teacher training. And we just always have felt like this was the best way to, you know, to capitalize on those folks.
This is not race to the top. This has been there...
It's been there for a long time.
Since No Child Left Behind, basically because the answer, No Child Left Behind, was that the way to improve your instruction was to train teachers and so that's why they cut out Title V and went the other. I, you know, I was disappointed to cut out serving students so much and have gone just to teacher training because those of us have been in it for a while and we needed a better mix, but that's not what Washington said, so...
But it's not some, for example, we couldn't take it and hire more teachers with this money? We couldn't take it and bring on some buses? It's got to be used for this and I guess the real question, and I think I'm hearing y'all say, is that the best way to spend that kind of money for teacher training?
We can't even do one day because it has to be sustained. They'll count two days as sustained. If you try to do a one-day training, they don't consider it sustained and you can't count it that way, so there's just so much red tape.
Doris? Is there a way we can get some, we as a board, get some feedback on the presentation? Some keynote things that you could lay out to the public to say, these are the benefits of this training?
Best way to do that would be to go to the conference and the board's welcome to the conference.
I'll read the teachers' comments, but I think Ann sent y'all some of those in the last two, three weeks.
Look at the state report card. There you go.
It's just, how do you provide in-service training to 2,700 people?
Yeah.
I mean, what, what way do you do it?
Need tuna fish, that was one of the comments, wasn't it?
That was on the menu, Ann.
One of them wanted a tuna fish sandwich.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, they did get mad about the lunch, they said that we were serving cheap lunches.
And it would have been nice to have childcare.
And we actually contract with our own, with our own high schools food service to do the lunches.
We did.
We don't go outside with that and when we go between the two buildings, we contract with our own bus drivers to, since we can't do it all in one building, to transport the teachers from Segal Middle to Segal High. So we're doing a, quite a bit inside that we can.
I guess, though, that's one of the things that caught my eye when I was reading it. It only lists 1,100 on the, on the page and I was wondering, what about the rest of them? It says K-12 and how we're going to determine who goes and then I read where it was, you know, 75-minute session, half a day or full day.
The cost went up this year for, one of the reasons is because we listen to teachers. We do a lot of the 75-minute sessions, but the teachers said, we would love for you to do more sustained training of a half or a full day, get on one topic and stay on it, be it Singapore math or some other major topic that you're trying to teach. The issue with... The issue with doing that was, it takes more trainers, because whereas a trainer might go through four sessions a day, or five, and you put them in one session, then you can just make it so large. And we do them in auditoriums. We do some in, in other large areas, you know? But if you get too large, your training's not great. So, our cost did go up sometime, some this year, because we listened to teachers who wanted more half-day and full-day training on one topic, because they felt it would make them better. And so, we did have to employ more trainers than we had in the past to do that. The other cost in there is, we do the online registration and tracking and that sort of thing, which we used to do some on our own. They really do like to look at that and read the synopsis and that sort of thing today.
Any other questions?
It's an expensive program. No question.
Any other questions? Thanks, Don.
Uh, that's followed up. We've got the Promethean Boards, also contract for Smyrna Primary School. I think it's coming out of their title money.
Let's see. You want Amy to say something about the Promethean Boards?
I don't, Amy or Dr. Puat, one, y'all want to say something about the Promethean Boards?
Sure, I'll just say that the money is allocated through the stimulus money, and at Roy Walfrid, we've been behind in our technology for a number of years. When I say behind, I'm comparing this to maybe some of the newer schools. And with the stimulus money, there was quite a bit in our school, and so, we tried to think of how we could use that money that would make the greatest impact for the greatest number of years. And we made several things, such as having summer school, that, and again, that may have an impact for that one summer, five weeks for those children. Uh, Roy Walfrid is highly transient population, so even if we educate those students, they may move on by the time the school ground in the fall. We've looked at another program for tutoring after school, the mini-bus, and taking the children. But there again, that's only a limited impact. So, once we got our computers shorted, replaced old units with newer units, added another cowl, which is a computer's on wheels, got laptops for all the teachers, we still had quite an abundance of money remaining to spend. We didn't want to hire staff that would go away in two years. So, we've been researching for about four years, the Promethean Boards. And I know they were very instrumental in increasing student achievement. And with our population being so diverse, we have a lot of E L L students that don't speak or read English very well. The Promethean Boards are very visual, they're very interactive, hands-on. The teachers can assess the students' progress immediately, give the students immediate feedback. And another reason for the Promethean Boards at Roy Walfrid is, we have a very hard time attracting and retaining quality teachers. We have wonderful teachers there, but it's a very difficult environment sometimes. Teachers burn out easily. Teachers aren't attracted to come down to almost the Davidson County line. And by having the Promethean Boards, it does enhance the teacher's ability to teach and the student's ability to learn. Martin did a study on them. So, we felt like we would love to be on the cutting edge of technology at Roy Walfrid, Roy Walfrid, and we, we feel the Promethean Boards will aid us in helping our children to show growth and gains, according to the No Child Left... Any questions?
What is your free and reduced percentage, and what is your E L L percentage?
We're currently close to eighty percent free and reduced. And the E L L students, we have, I think the latest count was somewhere a little over one hundred children, and of course, they're not all receiving direct services. So, I'm thinking, you know, probably thirty percent of those are direct with little or no English, but the Promethean Board will make it so that those students can see images on the Promethean Board, and they can actually get to manipulate, and we feel like it will enhance learning for our special ed and for our E L L group. And we do have a large percentage of special ed students as well. Not that we over-identify at Roy Walfrid, but they come in from over the Davidson County line, we have a lot of family-funded housing, and once we, we get our numbers down in our school, they just pop right back up. And it's, like I said, highly transient. Tell Mr. Gill, the first couple of six weeks, we had one-hundred-seventy-five children to leave Roy Walfrid, and a hundred-and-fifteen to come in.
That's unbelievable.
And our door just is a constant revolving door. But we feel like that we're making a lot of progress. We were, you know, able to get off-target this past year, we will stay off-target, and we're really hoping the Promethean Boards will aid us.
Doris, do you have a question?
You hear so much about, in the system, about they're not, they're being inadequate technology available, or not sufficient technology. Is it ever going to be possible for us to all be alike? Or are we going to be like a graph that goes up and down, up and down, all the time? Because you get a new school, now everybody else is behind.
Right.
Now, everybody else tries to catch up. Well, here's bits and pieces, we keep plugging stuff in, and somebody is never going to be where everybody else is.
Go to the store and buy a new computer, Mr. Jernigan, by the time you get home, it's obsolete. That's about the way they go.
I, I'm just, I say all of that just to, to look at the frustration aspect of it, because parents want the same technology in school that they have at home. They buy one computer, we buy thousands of computers, and it's not, I don't know that we can ever keep up.
This was one of our S A C's findings. At the end of two years, you have to report how you're progressing, so Roy Walfrid would be one of those things, that you're progressing to try to do that balance that you can use to get your S A C to plan.
Dr. Puat, you've made me proud tonight, and I'm proud that you talked to me, and I'd like to say I trained you, but that's all.
And then we've got two separate United Way contracts. And that takes us through the consent agenda.
Any other questions?
The mid-cumpl and head start, that's a, that's an agenda item, isn't it?
Uh, I believe it is, yeah.
And Mr. Clardy can address the tree trimming when he speaks, I guess, if he speaks tonight?
He doesn't, he doesn't actually speak tomorrow. You want to, I mean, it's just a routine bid on tree trimming, isn't it, Gary?
Yes, we end up with some trees that are fairly dangerous, large trees, that need cutting against buildings, some that sometimes blow down, that we need to cut up, and it's just, uh, basically, it's cheap and easier to get those things ground up, sawed up, ground up, and get them off-site pretty quickly. And we can even actually sometimes use that mulch in different places that we need it. So, it's a routine bid, just to have them on hold in case we do have a problem.
Question? No, no question. I just want to thank you for taking the time. To me, it's beneficial. I hope to the others it wasn't burden.
Okay, any other questions? I guess we go to number nine, Mr. Gill. No, not number ten, old business.
Uh, sometime in the last two months, I reported to you folks that we, and actually supplied you with a letter that, that I'd written, the T W S double A requested that they change the rule, which required that the board designate a site for a sport not offered at a school. For example, in this case, Central, Central Magnet School. And, uh, I went and presented our case and thought did so with, I don't know, thought made a relatively convincing argument for us, and the next day, they told me, they told me they weren't going to do that. So, we're back to square one with respect to football or wrestling, which means if a, if a kid that goes to a Rutherford County school, or a student goes to Rutherford County High School or Middle School, they want to go to Central, then they can't participate at football or wrestling there, because we don't have it. So, we're back to square one. We've got to decide whether we want to designate a site for sports that we don't offer there, or if, we just want to say, if you go there, you can't play football or wrestling. And I think that, those are our two choices.
Questions, statements, comments?
But I think whatever, we've got to make a decision on it, because March first deadline for submitting the application and also selecting those that choose to go there. February the first, pardon me.
Well, I guess, my two cents, I'd say if they choose the academic school, that they would not be, they would not be available to play football or wrestle anywhere else.
I guess, I look at, I look at, as far as all sports go, I, I, you know, what we do about the other sports, we've, we've offered, we're not offering football, basically, no facilities and all that, plus expense. But my recommendation would be, if we're going to allow them, let them go, let them go to Eagleville. I think you get into all the other big schools, I think you're going to run into problems.
Yeah, I agree with Terry. I hate to deny them the chance, and I know it's a choice school, but I don't know why we want to limit their options to do extracurricular, which, I mean, I think we know the students are going to be interested in that. And I think Eagleville, and distance proposes something, the problem is, as some of us have talked about, but it, it allows us having to pick one of the six comprehensive schools and create a, not, possibly a nightmare down the road.
Of course, Eagleville, that's a good point. Eagleville doesn't compete against any of the other schools either, so it's not...
Well, the only thing, we've got a number of students who may ultimately come from Laverne and Smyrna, who catch the bus in Smyrna or Laverne and come to Central. Now, they're at Central with no transportation, how are they going to get to Eagleville? We're going to pick up that burden?
I think that becomes the parent's, or the athlete's burden, of course.
But that has to be clarified up front.
It does, it does, I agree.
Any other comments? I guess we'll make a decision Thursday night, Mr. Gill.
Yeah, we need to. And just one other, just for clarification, Mr. Hodge touched on it, some of its expense, but primarily, it's just the numbers aren't there to support a football field, team. I mean, you need, you know, field, a team, you're going to need several hundred kids. I mean, Eagleville might be an exception, a smaller, single A school, but I don't think we'll ever reach the point where we, where we can justify a football program if, in three or four years down the road, when, when you guys are at full capacity, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and there starts to be an interest aboard them, might want to visit about letting them have a football team.
I think, sometimes, y'all, you're caught up in two-thousand being a normal-sized high school. Uh, two-thousand is not a normal-sized high school in Tennessee. Uh, Morsville High, I grew up in Smith County. Smith County has six-hundred-and-thirty-five students. Uh, they play double-A football as well as anyone. Uh, Morsville's in the same county with probably one-hundred-and-eighty-two-hundred children, and have won a couple of state championships. Uh, Kennedy County is very competitive in sports, and is probably six-hundred. So, I mean, you know, we, eventually, and I agree with you, at the moment, the cost is a big deal of anything. But, uh, you know, there are some small schools in the United States that have very good athletes on them, but that won't be our focus.
But I guess your point is, the point I was trying to make, we visit it in three or four years?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's right. I mean, Mark.
Does Eagleville have wrestling? Just, I know they have football.
They do have wrestling?
And Rick, this is, it's not related to sports, but it's related to Central. I don't, I'd like to hear how the numbers are going in terms of applications.
Sure. No, no, we talked about it today. Go ahead, John.
I look today, we have about five-hundred as of today. A lot of procrastination. We are taking several phone calls. Before Christmas, we were getting five or six a day, now we're getting about forty to fifty a day, so I would anticipate that continuing. We have about, say roughly, ten days left, so if forty a day, that'd be four-hundred more applicants, which would get us up around nine-hundred applicants. Uh, some of the applicants aren't eligible, but, uh, you know, we still process them. But, uh, no, I think we'll end up eight, nine-hundred. I still don't foresee us filling up sophomore class, but I do think, I think the three middle school classes are, have enough. Obviously, no one is in yet, except for a small group, but about seventy-five percent of each class is full, freshmen's probably sixty at the moment, and so, like I said, sophomores are lagging behind, but we sort of expected that.
So, you're fairly confident that six through nine will be...
Be pretty close to being full, yes, sir. Uh, I've actually been shocked by eighth grade. I really did not think eighth grade would do as well as it has, but at the moment, it's got more applicants than any other grade.
And you haven't, so you say you have not started looking at eligibility?
Well, really can't until the last one is turned in, uh, because it is a comparative thing. You know, there are a few children that their score, pretty good chance, but, uh, it is a comparative thing. So, once the la, as I get a, uh, application, I process it, put it in spreadsheet, you know, give the points and everything. And so, as soon as we get the last one processed, uh, all we have to do is sort, and we have the list. So, it shouldn't take too long after the last day.
You are getting some from Smyrna and Laverne?
Getting several from Smyrna and Laverne, several.
Okay. Wayne?
After you've completed this process, and you determine who's eligible and who's not, the students that are not eligible, how will you communicate that to them? Will you explain deficiencies in, in certain areas, you know, rather than just saying, you know, you're not coming? How, how will you do that?
Uh, everyone gets a letter. Obviously, the acceptance letters will have information about our first meeting and that sort of thing. Uh, the other letters will basically say, you're fifth on the list, you're, you know, seventeenth on the waiting list, or whatever, to sort of give an indication to the parents. You know, if I was fourth or fifth on the list, I would probably anticipate people moving and things like that, and I'll have an opportunity to get in. If I was thirtieth or fortieth on the list, it will probably be a little more difficult for that many to get in. It is, once again, strictly on numbers, so I most times don't even pay attention to who it is, I type it in and move on, but, uh, it's strictly a numbers thing.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Clardy will present Thursday night on all the various projects we, we've got that are going on. Twelve, Rockville Middle School Operation Integrity Program request. Principal Fred Barlow has requested that we implement Operation Integrity at Rockville at no additional cost to the board, and we recommend that you do that.
Questions?
This be our third?
Third school, Smyrna Middle, Central Middle, and Rockville.
Any other questions?
Thirteen. Facilities. Uh, Blackman High School Football Field House, Principal Vick has requested permission to construct a sixty-by-one-hundred-foot-long football field house at Blackman High School Sports Complex, south of the Homside Bleachers. You'll gain a weight room, locker room, coach's office. It will be pre-engineered metal building, on a concrete slab, constructed at no cost to the board. We recommend that you do that. And I asked Mr. Clardy to talk to Mr. Vick again to make sure, I mean, I don't think there are any title issues, Title IX issues. I asked him to get some information on funding, et cetera. Mr. Clardy, tell me what you found out.
The, um, ball players are currently dressing in athletic locker room, but she also has basketball, soccer in there also, and there's only a couple of hundred lockers, so it gets crowded. Weightlifting will also be using that room in this building. And I assume, as previous buildings that have been approved like this, that the gender equity is not an issue, because it's a football building, is that correct? And then, um, they are, currently have ninety-one thousand dollars. They are raising money all the time. They've currently, or just recently raised more money, and she's not, wasn't sure what the count on that is. And, uh, they have a commitment of a zero-interest loan from Green Bank, which is, will be in a fifty-to-sixty-thousand-dollar range. The football... The football, uh, will pay for half of that note, monthly payments on it, and the boosters will pay the other half. Uh, one of the reasons this will have to come back, they wanted initial approval on it just so that they can make sure they're, that everyone's on board, so they can, uh, progress with getting the loan and all those things set up, which would have to come back to the board for approval. So that's one reason that it appeared to be incomplete, it's just kind of initial okay to build it and then let them get everything else in place and bring it back one more time.
Sir?
Is this going to require the city permits?
It will be, and they'll be responsible for that. Uh, all of the other, um, buildings that have been built by other, anyone outside, uh, have been permitted. For instance, Segal has, all, all of that stuff has been permitted down to the stadium out there.
Any other questions? Brent?
We do have sufficient space to, to allow for this, plus, uh, still space i- in, in case we need to, uh, expand the educational buildings or whatever in the future. We still have plenty of space like that.
Yes, this is, uh, going, I believe there's a little, uh, uh, plot on there of the location of it. It's going on the, I guess that's the southeast corner of that, uh, stadium area.
Thank you.
Okay, B. Uh, Mid-Cumberland Head Start Modular Building. Mr. Tony Savage has requested permission to locate an additional 12 by 50 modular building adjacent to the three existing buildings at John Coleman Elementary School. The proposed modular building will be used to provide needed space for Head Start staff members. All cost expenses incurred for the project will be paid by Head Start. Dr. Phillips was notified and had no objections to doing it. Uh, therefore, uh, we've investigated the location and we have no issue with respect to allowing them to do that, and we recommend that you let them put a 12 by 50 modular building at John Coleman property. There's already, what, Mr. Clardy, two or three Head Start?
Three.
Three Head Start, uh, modular buildings there that are accommodating, uh, ki- children, young children.
I think Dar's got a question about insurance and...
I guess, you know, their classroom size is probably similar to ours, 15, 20 children, which then brings the parents in there. Who's responsible for any liability issue that comes up as it relates to approximately 100 people coming on your campus every day?
Jeff and Angel, one of y'all, please.
You own, the school board owns the properties, so the school board would be responsible for it. So it falls within the scope of our same liability coverage carriers for insurance that any other entry would fall within, even if it's in the school.
Head Start then becomes an, an insured under our policy.
It, it, they would be.
One of our carriers aware of that?
Well, we have broad coverage, so I don't, I, it, we're self-insured up to a certain point anyways. It's not going to make a difference in our coverage.
So we are taking on some liability here?
I, I guess we are. Of course, Head Start provides valuable service for us, you know, those kids that who otherwise may not be exposed to learning at that early age are. But yeah, I'm su- there is a liability.
So I'm just saying that we need to be aware of what our potential exposure might be.
Any other questions? C.
Segal High School Covered Press Box Deck. Uh, Principal Nolan has requested permission to build a covered, uh, eight-foot-wide by 32-foot-long, uh, deck at Segal High School Sports Complex to act as a press box to protect workers and audio equipment from the weather. Plans have been presented to the Engineering and Construction Department for review. The project will be fully funded by Segal High School Baseball Booster Club, including permits at no cost to the board. Recommend that we construct an eight-by-32-foot-long covered press box deck at Segal High School Sports Complex. It will be constructed and fully funded by the Segal High School Baseball Booster Club at no cost for other county board education.
Question?
So this is just for the baseball team? Or does this, does this look, overlook the, uh, softball?
I'm not sure, Garrett, either.
It's, uh, built behind the baseball, uh, screen. Be, uh, it will be up above the seating just behind, so you'll pretty much only be able to view, uh, the baseball field.
He's, he's probably thinking, is it a title issue?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if that's with the girls' softball team.
You got a thought on that, Angel?
If the building would be, is that true?
No, yeah, I mean, if, I mean, if, obviously, the softball field won't have the same.
Right.
Might be something we need to check on.
Would it be an issue with Title IX?
It could be. I won't say it would be, but if they come in and look at Title IX, they look at the, at our entire athletic program overall. So it wouldn't be comparing necessarily one to the other, but whether their resources, softball's resources, match up overall to the baseball resources. So it could be, but, but potentially not. I mean, depending on how other resources have been allocated to softball. And I think we've been pretty consistent with everything so far. It's not a huge, a huge expenditure, or as I said, um...
Dar, did, did we run into a similar question with, when they built something behind the baseball field at Segal Middle School?
Well, to my knowledge, and most of that happened before I came, but my understanding, having reviewed the files, were that, uh, initially, the issue was dugouts, covered dugouts at Eagleville, baseball and softball. But that's what sparked the issue, and then they came in and looked at the entire program. So like I said, it's not comparing necessarily one dugout to another, they look at the entire athletic program. What we've tried to do since then is to keep things consistent as we go along, so you don't get an overall, um, amount.
Did, did they not at the middle school build a, a structure where they could look out both sides? The baseball field and the softball field?
They had a structure behind the baseball, but they opened the concession stand up, so that it would also, uh, work for softball. And then also, we brought a pad over there, and then they installed bleachers on it at the softball, because they didn't have any bleachers.
And those are bigger issues than how the concession stand you're talking about, like sports related, like money versus the other sports, not having that ability, those are, are bigger issues. I, I don't think that this is a huge problem, or a problem.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Gill.
14, financial matters. Uh, 2010, 2011 budget for information only. The general purpose school cafeteria and capital project budgets are in the early stages of planning and preparation. County has approved its budget calendar. Four significant dates for the school board are April the 26th. We, the county board of education, will, on or before this date, file with the finance department their preliminary request for appropriations. June the 15th, Budget Finance and Investment Committee will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget at the Rutherford County Courthouse at 7:00 PM. June the 21st, the Board of Education shall, on or before this date, adjust the items, uh, line items required by changes made by the Budget Finance and Investment Committee. June 28th, Budget Finance Investment Committee will present the proposed budget to the county legislative body at 9:00 AM. And the county's budget calendar is in the tab. A budget that will be filed with the county by April the 26th, 2010 will still be very preliminary, since we won't have the May BEP estimate from the state. Back in 2002, we did not get a good BEP figure until after the budget had been approved. So obviously, we have a lot of unknowns when we enter into this year's budget. But those are the dates that we have to adhere to.
Questions? B.
Capital, capital project, McFadden renovation. Uh, $223,604 went to fund balance due to savings on projects that were completed in fiscal 2009. We are asking that this $223,604 be budgeted so that the McFadden renovation can be started during the 2009, 2010 year. Total project is estimated to be in the $400,000 range. The balance of the funding will be in the 2010, 2011 budget. This is not a new project, been planned along with Central Magnet School project. Recommend that we amend $223,604 from the fund, uh, 177 fund balance and budget as the McFadden renovation project is presented.
Questions? C.
Funding amendment. Hang on a second. Funding amendment, purchase of Jordan House at Eagleville High School. The Rutherford County Board, uh, requested an appraisal of the property at 628 Highway 99, Eagleville, Tennessee, adjacent to Eagleville High School and owned by Nathan, Nathaniel Jordan Senior. Appraisable, appraisal has been received and the property appraised at $107,000. Staff has received a letter from Mr. Jordan's agent requesting a price of $145,000. We negotiated the price down to $120,000 through Mr. Jordan's agent with an additional closing cost not to exceed $4,000 for a cost of $124,000. Mr. Reed, the board attorney, will reside over the closing. Request from Principal Holt has been received requesting the purchase and indicating a number of purposes which the property can be utilized, including expansion for horticulture, horticulture offices, uh, potting room, possible science room, possible fieldhouse site, possible dressing room, coach's office, and parking for the stadium. Uh, funding. A, in order to purchase the Jordan property in Eagleville for $144,000, this amendment would reallocate $50,446 from the maintenance department and $73,554 within function 76100 capital outlay to the capital outlay land account. And we're going to recommend that, uh, you amend $50,446 from the maintenance department and $73,554 within capital outlay function 76100, for a total of $124,000, to the capital outlay land account in order to purchase the Jordan property in Eagleville as presented. Part B, we're also requesting that the GPS school fund be reimbursed from Fund 177 Capital Projects for $20,421 in McFadden renovation design fees that have already been paid from account 141, uh, from Fund 141, account 7610399. Recommend that, uh, you request reimbursement to the general purpose school fund from Fund 177 Capital Projects for $20,421 in McFadden renovation design fees that have already been paid from Fund 141, account 76100-399, and recommend that you approve the purchase of Nathaniel Jordan Senior's home at 628 Eagleville, uh, Tennessee, for a price of $120,000 in closing cost not to exceed $4,000 for a cost of $124,000 contingent on county commission approval of the funding. Now also, you get that, uh, Mr. Clardy? Yeah. Here's, uh, on this aerial photo, you'll see Nathaniel, uh, Jordan's property right there and how it really kind of dissects school property. And, uh, I think you can also look at that and tell how it could potentially be very useful to the school.
Questions?
I'll make a comment. I was out there the other day and, and noticed that how key this would be to the, to the puzzle. And, uh, again, you could, uh, entrance would be compromised if somebody else probably got this property and, uh, seemed like it's fairly reasonable, uh, price for the whole situation.
Any other questions, comments, Terry?
I guess the only question I have, which I'm in favor of this, don't get me wrong. This $50,000 we're taking from maintenance, what's that?
Isn't that, is that the, uh, five cents that we gave to the commission, Jeff? Is that coming out of that?
Uh, no, sir, that is not coming out of that. Uh, just in our discussions on this, we were trying to come up with a funding method that we thought would be palatable to the county commission.
So?
With that capital outlay money, uh, ta- talk about what we'd use that for. I mean, how is, we've got that balance in there?
That's where, that's where we have an actual reservation coming out of that. And we, we have paid $20,000 already in design fees for that McFadden renovation out of the commission. We'll be asking for reimbursement for that.
Uh, I guess my point is, I don't want to see maintenance cut short. You know, but you're telling me this is the only way we can come up with money. I guess that's what we have to do.
Well, they'd be more, like you said, palatable to doing it, probably. I, I thought, when I brought that up, and you and I have discussed this three or four times, but, uh, with respect to that five cents we give the commission, which is equivalent of what, $2 million, $2.5 million?
Uh, more than $2 million, just...
All right, how, how, I mean, is that fun? That's an annual commitment by us.
That's an annual commitment, but it's maintenance repair. I, 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 I was not sure that that would be very palatable to use for buying this property.
Well, in connection with what Mr. Hodge said, if, if for some reason, this money, we tap into that capital outlay fund and we need some, something to replenish it, we could always go back and ask for something. So that would address that.
Donald, did you have a question on this? Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the aerial view? What's the Eagleville Lions Club?
They probably meet there?
Right in the Buick Center, overlaps the school, it overlaps the gymnasium, and it says Eagleville Lions Club.
They probably got a, have they got a concession stand there or something?
Yes, sir.
That's what it is, a concession stand, I think, that belongs to them. They probably built it, of course, when you build something on a school property, it becomes property of the school. But I'm sure they have their name and everything on it.
Down in the lower left-hand corner, it says Eagleville School in the green spot. But, uh, I, I'm just trying to satisfy my own mind about how large a piece of property this is that we...
It was just a little piece of land over there that we owned, and it seemed like there was an issue with respect to who had, who, who that property really belonged to, wasn't there, Mr. Clardy?
There was. Uh, that piece you're seeing back there, uh, that says Eagleville School, is, uh, back next to 99, behind...
Well, the, the road now runs through some of that.
Well, it, it does. Uh, that whole area there, the dark, is basically the road there. Uh, but the balance between the street and Rutherford County is equal, is roughly equal. And, uh, since they've done the road up there, they have now upgraded that bottom off. And it could be used for parking, or it's leveling up if you want to put the top soil on it and sew it down for extra practice field or whatever you can get down.
I, I was there the other day, and I noticed kids coming out of the parking lot, cutting through this area, coming over to the new road. So we've, in essence, built a, an unpaved gravel, not, not gravel, unpaved road out the back of the school.
Well, they put an aggregate up to 99, and of course, we don't have the funds to complete a little artery up to there to the schoolyard at this time, but it's kind of a future plan.
Any other questions? Next.
D, Rutherford County Schools Lighting Management System. Uh, just a little history, we talked about this two or three or four months ago in the board. And also Health Ed approved unanimously of doing this. Uh, we've still been waiting on the fee, uh, the state, uh, to come through with the funding on it or the financing. They've already committed to money. Uh, but that said, this agreement with Excel Energy essentially parallels that orig- it does parallel that original agreement. I'm just going back over to tell you that we're going to ask, uh, the county court to, to enter into this lease purchase, uh, agreement with us so that we can proceed with these censors. And at the October 15th, 2009, school board made the following request was forwarded to the county commission to approve Excel Energy's $2,337,515 proposal for occupancy censors contingent on state approval of the system's Efficient Schools Initiative grant of $741,480 and the county commission's approval of financing the $1,596,035 balance. State has approved our grant, but the loan documents for this program still have not been approved by the comptroller. We're asking to move forward with the commission, at the commission, for the seven-year lease purchase plan Mr. Kuhn's firm has prepared. Financing terms of the, of this $2,337,515 proposal for occupancy censors Financing terms of the, of this two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars proposed, proposal matched the terms that were approved in October. Uh, there'd be seven hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars grant money. Uh, I hate to say it's free to us, but that's what it is by, by participating in this. Five hundred thousand at zero percent for seven years, one million, ninety-six thousand, thirty-five dollars at three percent for seven years. I think the whole thing averaged out to about two point one percent. The E. E. S. I. funding or a Rutherford County bond issue would still be other funding options. The county commission would have to make the final financing decision, and we're going to recommend that we, we do this, uh, in particular pursuant to what we'd agreed on earlier. But I, I would remind you, taking you back, going through some of the figures, it's an investment on our part of sixty-four thousand dollars a month, uh, and it should be fifty-nine thousand dollars a month savings. So in retrospect, we're putting five thousand dollars a month into this. Over seven years, it will pay for itself. Now, when Mr. Kroom was here, he wanted to remind us that by the year two thousand thirteen, I believe it was, our original lighting upgrade would be paid for, so in retrospect, the payoff would be long before that, but technically, that's kind of in his own way a moot point. But, uh, you know, I mean, I think we, obviously, I said it before and I say again, we'd be forced not to go forward with it.
Questions?
Even if the commission, uh, did a bond issue, what are we looking at? Point zero, 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 one of a penny? I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty small part of it, wouldn't it? One thousandths of a, of a penny in property tax that would take to pay for this?
For, for our net cost, it's about fifteen hundredths of a cent on property tax.
Any other comments or questions on that? On item fifteen, these are all routine bus contracts. I don't think Mr. Gill needs to read them unless anybody has a question on those, on any one in particular. They're all upgrades on the buses that people have purchased. I believe they are, aren't they, are they at all?
Yes.
Any questions on those at all? Okay, let's just move past that and go down to, uh, board discussion. I do have one thing I need to say on this board discussion. Uh, Mr. Donald Jernigan had to leave, but he wanted me to mention, uh, that there were a lot of people that called him about zoning, and he had, uh, he was gonna, uh, have some comments about that, but he just had to leave tonight and he could not, he had to leave by this time. If he'd, before this time, we'd gotten to this part, he would have made a comment, so he didn't want anybody to think that he'd forgotten them, and he will bring some things, issues up.
What, what kind of zoning?
He's talking, he, he's talking about some of those issues that we, that we already dealt with, uh, in the.
Christiana or something?
In the Christiana area, I'm sure he's gonna bring that up again.
I have been asked some questions about the Brent Mead area, and our motion seems to be some confusion. Now, this is the way I understood the motion. If families residing in that general area, another, to my chagrin, I found out later that there are two areas there. There's an older subdivision and then there's Brent Mead. Uh, but when I say Brent Mead, I'm encompassing both areas. If I have a child that's a student at Siegel High School, I also have a child that's a student at Siegel Middle School. Motion the other night would have allowed that child at Siegel Middle School to continue at Siegel Middle School until they graduate because of the older sibling at the high school. See, and there's, that was my understanding, and I see two heads shaking to the contrary. That's the same kind of questions that I'm being asked by some of the Brent Mead residents. Also, I understand that there is a child in Brent Mead who has an older sibling at Siegel High School who's in, you know, at Last Cassus. And maybe there's a child that has a, in another school that also lives in Brent Mead that has a, that would fit in that middle school age group. Now, if that child at Brent Mead or is in the sixth, uh, is in the fifth grade, then when they, the next year, they go to Oakland Middle School. But it's just for those children who are presently in that middle school age group and are presently in the middle school that they would get to follow their brother or sister to.
When you, you, I know you inquired about this a couple of weeks ago, we did a little research, James and I. Are you prepared to speak to it, aren't you?
I've, um, I've had this question a dozen times in the last couple of weeks. Uh, to simply put it, the board rezoned all, all the, all the kids who were middle school that were rezoned, none of them were grandfathered. If you've been rezoned to a new middle school, you're expected to go to that middle school next year, no grandfather, and that's the simple way. In the Brent Mead subdivision, if you have a, when, when those children get to high school, if they have a sibling still attending high school, then they can also go to Siegel High, so they would go to Oakland Middle for a year or two and then go back to Siegel High if the family chooses. They'd have to provide transportation, and the board's intent, my understanding, was, was so that you would not have children at two different high schools, but it did not affect the middle school zoning whatsoever. Uh, if I've misunderstood that, let me know, but that's what we've been telling people. I also understand that Brent Mead has started a, some people have started a website, and that they posted that information, because one of them emailed me and asked me, could I explain it to them, and I did, and the feedback that I've got from those families are that that's been helpful, that they understand the, they don't agree necessarily, but they understand what the board has done now.
All right, let me ask this, James, and two questions. If you're an Irma Siegel and your brother or sister's, you're in the sixth grade or fifth grade Irma Siegel, and they're at Siegel High School, they graduate, you're not in Siegel Middle, you're not entitled to anything?
That's correct.
Okay. What about Last Cassus? We didn't address that.
The board did not address Last Cassus.
Are there kids at Siegel High that, and I don't know if the zones, but are there kids that, that, uh, leave Last Cassus that do go to Siegel High?
Uh, there could be some on the fringe, uh, in the Walter Hill area. I would have to get Shane to pull up if there are any kids affected, but the board's motion only addressed Brent Mead.
Yeah.
And you've got, up by the landfill, you've got a lot of Last Cassus students there.
Yes, sir, but some of them and most of them go to Oakland. There may be a few on the fringes that go to Siegel.
But I thought, uh, new zoning, they would be required to go to Oakland Middle School.
Yes, sir.
Now, was there, is there a good way to get to, to clarify that so that there aren't questions? I mean, I don't know if we do it through the, if we try to do it through Messenger, it might, might further confuse folks.
We could definitely post something on, just kind of a frequently asked questions, uh, article on the website about the rezoning, because there are questions also about Christiana Middle School. Uh, it's not, it's not only, this is not only, uh, Siegel Middle School.
We don't have to talk of any of those either.
There's a, there are a couple of middle schools that are getting calls.
Well, let's do that, that's a good thought.
Sure.
Grant, you, you made the original motion.
Well, intent of, of the motion was obviously to have, to not have two children of the same family at, at different high schools at the same time. I, I can see that then, uh, obviously, their, their request was, was that, and obviously, this, this particular issue didn't come up, but I was under the impression that, uh, that they would be going through, like I said, for ones going to, to Siegel, would be going through the, uh, uh, junior high, because it, it would be involving one year. I think if there was one, one issue, it'd only be one year.
It could be two years, seven and eight.
Okay, but anyway, and, and to, to pull somebody flip-flop like that, I, I don't know, it seemed like that's a disruption.
We can do that if the board wants to do that.
Intent of, of, of doing this is to have, uh, lessen the disruption for each family.
Go ahead, Mark. Do you have something to say?
I understand this might not be what everybody wanted, but I thought it was pretty clear that night. Middle schoolers are moving and, and they're, and we accepted this argument about the high school students. You know, after going through a lot of consideration, I thought, for that, and I, I thought we were sort of extending an olive branch, saying, okay, we buy the argument that it's difficult to have two students in two different high schools, so we'll make this accommodation, but, uh, there was no discussion of extending it to the middle school, best of, I remember, so I'm, I'm not quite sure where the confusion is coming.
No, there was, that's the problem, there was no discussion, but the same logic.
Therefore, it was not included.
But to me, the same logic applies. Why do I want a student here and here when there is a solution to having them here and here?
Well, we agreed to one thing, and now, and now it's become a chorus for something else, and, okay, we can have that discussion, but just don't say that we did that in a previous thing, where I don't think we did.
But it doesn't end here. See, if you do that and you change that, then you're gonna have another big problem right out there with Mr. Jernigan. Of all those people that requested, they want their middle schoolers, you know, to be grandfathered in, well, they want them to stay here or go there. So it's not, it doesn't end, it never ends. When you, when you do this, it never ends. I just, uh, and you know that as well as I do, because we were involved in one that's never ended. It's never ended till now.
Well, there are actually three middle schools involved. There's Rockvale, has a few as well, so.
What is the population of, uh, Siegel Middle right now?
Twelve hundred?
It's, uh, eleven, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty.
So we're way over capacity.
Oh, yeah, we're trying to give relief to Siegel Middle somehow, some way.
But, but for me, as I said, my understanding was, or was that the Siegel Middle student would remain there and track on till they're, till they graduated. You know, they would follow their sibling.
That's, that's not what the motion was. I mean, the board can entertain an addition if they want to do that, but the motion only dealt with the high school part.
Even here, we have confusion among the six.
And it's not unique for children to be in two different schools, or three different schools.
No, sir. You have kids that go to Stewart's Creek Middle School that end up going to Blackman High, they're not always next door. It's a growing county.
And, I mean, board members can bring it up again, and the board can vote on it however they want to, but it's.
If you rescind it, five, two, would it take a rescinding?
It has to be, it has, what has to be, it has to be a, a rescind vote, to rescind what we've done, I would think.
Well, should we put it on the agenda?
That's what Mr. Reed said, it'd take a five, two vote for rescinding.
Mr. Chairman, should we put it on the agenda for a discussion? For, uh, for?
Well, it's, it's already on it, it's general discussion by board members. When it comes up, it can be, it can be brought up.
But I'm talking about as far as, as a line item, uh, if, if we're gonna, if we need to get this resolved, we'd probably need to do so pretty quickly, and I think we'd, I mean, uh.
Is there enough, I, I agree, it needs to be resolved and voted one way or the other, but the, the motion, whatever the motion is, we'd have to rescind, am I correct, Mr. Reed? Because I've been caught in this one before. We have to rescind what we previously scheduled.
It's not on the agenda now, so since it's not on the agenda, you'd have to have the majority, super majority vote. So if it's placed on the agenda, you'd have to have a standard vote. You go back and pa- place it on the agenda as a rescission motion.
So if we place it back on the agenda, it has to be a rescension vote?
If you place it back on the agenda as a line item, give public notice of it, so you notified everyone of it at, at some subsequent meeting, then a simple majority prevails. Since if you take it up this Thursday, since you've done, given notice of it, then you'd have to have a super majority.
Which is five to two.
Because you're rescinding without any prior notice.
You have any recommendation?
You'd have to have a five, two vote.
Do you have any recommendation, the, the cleanest way to handle it, do you think?
Uh, whichever way the board wants. I don't know what the disposition of the board is, so that's a call for you guys to make.
Mr. Gill, what's your recommendation?
Well, like I said, we're trying to offer some relief to Siegel, we've done that, it's not, uh, it's not at all unusual for kids to go to Oakland, uh, you know, we've got two or three feeder schools at almost every high school in the county. I mean, I, I don't think we ought to do anything with it personally, but again, I, that's just my feelings.
What's the feeling of the board? I know what your feeling is.
I think we already decided. I don't know how many.
I would agree. We already decided.
You think we decided to?
Oh, yeah, I agree. If you can't get a super majority and get it going Thursday night, that's, that's a given.
So you don't, you don't have that, so.
Now, we can put it back on the next agenda and bring it up for discussion, and then we could, at that time, would only require a simple majority.
But I think if, I think if you don't have a super majority to put it on, back on the agenda, I think it's, I think it's a dead issue.
I'd go to another meeting. I'd go away from this Thursday night to the next. I'd go to February's meeting, it's with an agenda item, then we can, we can put it on the agenda and we can discuss it, and it takes a simple majority to rescind.
We can do that, I guess, if you want to, but it's, it's, uh, I, I think you're opening a can of worms, you don't want to, I don't know how Donald feels, but I, I know there's one, two, three, four right here. Now, even if I change their mind by the next time you have another meeting, but I'm just, and I, from, they're nodding their heads, they hadn't voted, but they've nodded their heads, so I assume that's what's going to be.
We don't have to, we don't have to make a decision to add it tonight, we can do that Thursday night if you want to, but I, we owe it to Donald to have some, he has an interest in, because he's got issues.
He's got issues he wants to bring up, I understand that.
And I'm still saying at the north end of this Oakland zone, we're gonna have that issue. I won't be here and resolve it or hear about it next fall, but it's gonna come up.
I, I know one thing, as hard as it is, hard as it is to zone.
No, probably, it's gonna create a disaster.
I, I don't, I, I hope we don't go back and start, you know, cherry picking areas and start making more grandfathering and making more provisions of what we already done. It could, it could.
Well, we can decide. If, if the board wants to put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it Thursday night. If they want to put it back on the agenda, we'll put it on there, uh.
Well, we may be see what input we might get in the meantime from, from the folks that are affected, and then that may dictate whether or not, uh.
Anything else?
Would you have anything happy to say?
Happy. This bunch is never all happy.
Everybody's not happy. Happy, and you know, clap your hands.
I'll tell you, it's been, it's been a really nice several days that we've, I've been on a cruise and that kind of refreshed me, so, but anyway.
You're happy you haven't seen us in a while, that's what you said.
Well, I haven't been going quite that far, but, okay.
I'm sure the public wants to know where you went to. Anything else?
B. turn.
Would you, uh, focus?